All right, we will, we've had the pledge before the budget hearing, so we'll go right into the roll call and all members are present. A quorum is established. And you have the consent agenda in front of you, which includes the minutes of two meetings. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll make that motion. John, please, second. Seconded by Katie. Discussion, does anybody want to pull anything up if it's that agenda? There are no other items other than those two minutes. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
No, say no. Motion carry. We'll go into the reports. Mr. Black.
Sure. Chris. And welcome to our September regular meeting, the calendar, as we start our academic year. Several upcoming committee meetings to highlight, starting tonight with our regular board meeting. And then as well on Wednesday, we'll gather again for Board of Education Professional Development Opportunity with Von Briesen. And they'll be sharing best practices to our board and having open dialogue, growing our skill sets as board members. And at the district, our policy committee will meet on the 19th at 3:00, as well as instructional committee will meet on the 21st at 2:00. And then again, we'll meet together as a board for our special meeting on the 26th, followed by our connections committee on the 28th. So full slate of events and practices going on through the month of October, excuse me, of September. Into the month of October, some highlights there. Board members are always welcome to our events. On the 3rd, we'll have our bilingual program gathering, 4:30 to 6:30 at the intermediate middle school. Noting we have a professional development day on the 7th. And as well, that's our homecoming celebration night with our Friday game and activities that take place during that week. And then into the rest of the month of October, our regular meeting on the 10th, along with two other district events, which I encourage board members to be part of, as well as our community if interested. The annual big band dinner dance at 5:00 p.m. at the high school, as well as our choir pops concert, grade 7, 12, on the 7th in the high school auditorium. We'll round out the month of October with our special meeting on the 24th. Any questions on calendar?
The tickets are pretty reasonable for those musical districts.
Absolutely, absolutely. They can be at the high school office, pick up tickets at the Duncan High School's food services in there. Encourage you to go if you haven't, it's a great night.
Did we sell out last year? I know I went. Is there a limit? There's a limit rate.
I believe there is a limit. I don't know the capacity of it, but it's darn near standing room only, if you will. But it's a catered event, great dinner dance type atmosphere. Really, I believe the Lawrence group comes over from Lawrence University as well and contributes in. I believe that's part of it again. It's a neat event to kick off the year.
Do we have that in Mary's list of she's got?
Oh, I'm sorry. Far as upcoming.
Because I feel like for advanced tickets, that's we should like, it's only a month away. Well, it's really good.
That's a moment, on that one? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Perfect.
And if there are no more questions, then we will move to Joe's report on business services.
Oh, I get my district administrator.
Oh, I think.
By the calendar, yep, there is not a problem.
All right.
All right, just efficiently move through the district administrator report, noting that the school started on September 1st. One of the reports for the board that I've had in communications as well individually and electronically. Off to a great start of the academic year with the Steger start and then the adjusted start date at our intermediate middle school. Kind of tying some of these together here, sincere thank you to all of our middle school families, students and staff and support staff that ready our building for the opening. Noting we're just at the completion stage of phase one. Sincere thank you to Mr. Markort and his skill set as business director of business services to work with our contractors in Millbach to ensure we were ready for opening on the Tuesday of the 5th. And then as well, just a couple of highlights of community engagement events that are taking place. I believe I mentioned these, but in formal print on the 22nd, that we'll have community engagement event at the high school for our varsity volleyball, as well as our D1 and 2 games. Community is open to attend and welcome to take an event, as well as on that Friday for the Friday football game against Seymour. Our community is all welcome for free admission. Just one other item, just to highlight to keep forward, our board informed and ready to. Some of you, I believe, are knowledgeable of this and I sent this out, but all board meeting materials and packet materials are now on our webpage. And if you go to our webpage, it's usually accessed under the board icon, if you will, and then on the right-hand side of board dates, meeting agendas and materials. So community can access materials which the board has in preparation for the event or the board meetings that take place. We'll continually look to enhance that process as well, shows all of our known board meetings as they currently exist, to say our special, excuse me, our regular and special meetings are listed. The goal will be to bring up our committee meetings as well as they come forward and then to align that process as well, to stay up and transparent with when our meetings are taking place.
I have a question on that. Is that kind of where you were thinking of having the link to for people to submit agenda item? Or is that a policy, I'm sure it's a policy.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was gonna mention that. So for that to happen, okay, I know our policy committee meetings on the 19th, and we were addressing policies through the 100 through 150 at our first session. A policy that would potentially bring in that conversation is 172. So I anticipate in the near future that policy will come forward. So if that is something that the committee feels is relevant, we need to act or move on, that would be where that would start.
One of the things that I looked at today, when I was looking at the board packet, was on the school calendar. You know, typically the school calendar is set up for sports.
Yep.
But there is something, there is a calendar for districts.
Sure.
And we should, we should put all of our meetings on that calendar, like, you know, the committee meetings and the regular meetings and the, and the special meetings.
Yes, it's all in that place.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, maybe not everybody will, will think of that because it looks like a sports calendar.
Right, right.
You know? Because it's, it's not the most convenient to do that information right now. Yeah, maybe that's something we could talk about in our connections committee meeting.
All right, any questions outside of, thank you for the feedback. Okay.
So now, Mr. Markort. Did you do your 212 and all that?
The 212. It was the direct reflection of all individuals in our custodial team. That was definitely part of that, bringing it back, yes.
I think it's hard for the community to understand just the effort that was put forth. We toured the building two weeks ago. We basically toured a construction site. The ceilings were not in the building, the halls were covered with materials and boxes, and all the things that a construction crew needs to assemble. Thanks to Mr. Black for bringing forward that two days, I know it's said convenient for parents, but assured that we could provide a safe school environment, a functional school environment, with a whole lot of help from everybody who's associated with that building in the district. So it was quite a makeover from going through it at the open house to where we had seen it nine days before.
It really was. It was incredible.
I know Mrs. Framar's like, I was pounding at my own shelves, you know, I think everybody was really doing whatever they could do.
Nobody was standing still.
And board members, just to bring up a direction from the connections committee. Josh Visti from the city, who is their videographer, will be coming in. We tentatively had the Friday, on September 2nd, he was gonna come in and I'm gonna push that back. Now, as these spaces are finalized, and in a tent is to share out, if you're not a parent or guardian in the building and may not see that, we're gonna give a video tutorial of our new spaces and put that on the website. So Josh is gracious to come over, similar to what we did with the Parkview scenario there when we opened up for business.
That's awesome, because I did hear from community members saying, well, I didn't even know there was an open house, I didn't even know I could tour it. And the window of opportunity has gone.
They probably will when it's all done.
When it's all done, yeah.
Right.
And I explained it's a two-year process.
And I think that was primarily for the parents.
Yes.
This open house was.
Yes.
Right, yeah, it was in the community.
Right.
Yeah, because we had talked about the big one.
Yeah.
When it's, when it's done.
Done.
What was the crane here for the other day?
They had to pick a forklift out of our school, so.
Going in?
No, we found it.
We couldn't keep it?
In the, in the process, Mr. Markort, you can correct me if I misspeak here, but on the mezzanine area where the HVAC units were being taken out, dismantled and new ones put in, when they were craned in, for us and our ability to move them, we needed the forklift up in that mezzanine area to move them the length of the square foot.
I remember who I'm talking about.
So to close that up, we're done. So now, the crane had to come out.
And pull it up off the roof.
Well, it was in the mezzanine, up in and over. So, yes, that's what that was the purpose of it.
And no more questions for Mr. Black? Now we will move on to Mr. Markort and the business report.
Sure, two items tonight. One is to just to start sharing a name that many of you may start hearing from Chartwells. Personally, Monica Baumann is starting to get familiar with our stewardship as the food service director. Many of you may have heard that name Travis Mayer over the last few years. He decided to stay at home and be with one of his kids. And so the Chartwells is in charge of having a food service manager here as our contracted service. And they have hired Monica Baumann to do so. She is being trained by a person by the name of David Gout right now, who is in a different school district and we're working through that transition. So we want to welcome her to the school district and our admin team and our staff will all start to get to know her as she gets familiar with the school district. The second one is just a formal recognition of Tigerton Lumber. You may have heard this name at the last school board meeting, when you remember talking about the board recognizing a friend of the district through the actions that you can do. And Tigerton Lumber donated some lumber again to the high school arts department. You can see that the donation of that was over $2,000. So we again thank that team up there for continuing to donate that lumber to the high school for use in those programs.
Any questions for Joe? Hearing done, we'll, thank you, Joe, and thank you again. And we will move on to people's service candyware.
Okay, I just have three items for the board tonight, and they are items you've heard before. These are just annual updates and I have a topic summary that's just an annual update that you guys have heard before already. First one is just notifying the board that we have signed memorandum of understanding with all of our outside counseling providers again this year. We currently have eight counseling agencies that are providing service. The one that gives us the most quantity of time is Rawhide Youth Services, and they just had their final meeting with the high school staff today. So to remind the board again what that means, these agencies come onsite. We provide them a workspace to meet with our, their student clients, and that provides the family an option that their student is able to receive counseling services and the parents don't need to take up the work and drive them into those services. So the providers that provide us the most time are Integrity and Sherman and Rawhide Youth Services. So that is all squared away again for the year, and I'm just updating the board, and we have all our memorandums of understanding signed. The other update I have is just to give an update on our annual August in-service. The board is aware, and some of you attended the August in-service. We proceeded with our professional staff and our support staff on August 29th to 30th, 31st, before we went into open house and then eventually started school. One of the kickoff items at our August in-service was a large-scale safety training that Ryan Nierke took the lead on as far as safety protocols and accurate shooter awareness and safety awareness. The New London Police Department and the Wapaka County Sheriff's Department actually attended that with us, as well as members of the Wapaka School District. So just an update for the board on that. And then safety team updates, I believe we have a topic summary on the next board meeting, but the safety team is continuing to meet. And on that team this year, we of course have members of the New London Police Department, the Wapaka Sheriff's Department and the Wapaka Emergency Management Team. So there'll be more on that at the next board meeting. Any other questions?
Oh, no, I don't want to answer. I met with Samaritan on my own in August or July, I think it was, and I found it super enlightening. But she had offered to come when it works for all of us, maybe a quick presentation of our meeting, because they have their first full cycle of data from COVID to post-COVID a year. And she said the data was so astounding, and she's thinking of trying to meet with all of her districts, and I wondered if we could extend that invite because I found, like, I just felt a lot better in meeting with her in person, because I'm a freshman and I, I'm just really glad I went. But I think she had some valuable info to share, if she's open to that, could we try to book that? Because she had some really good data that I think we all should know on the comparables.
Is that something the board is interested? They were here at another board meeting.
They were, but she didn't have the data then. So she had just gotten, I just thought we could put it out there for the future and invite them, and now that we have a signed contract, I think it'd be relevant.
The contract is signed for counseling services, not the Samaritan screener? So it's a counseling service?
Okay.
So these are counseling services where they're working with.
Okay, so we're not, well, we're using them, right? For the screener?
The screener is not currently in place.
Well, we can table that, but I do think it'd be good to invite her back with her full data cycle on talking about the mental health impacts, just in the light, like, just in the light.
Is that something the board is interested in?
Yes, I would be. Yeah, I would be.
Is that something you'd want to sit down and, or have a full conversation with her on first?
Yeah, because she offered.
And then determine whether this is some valuable information to share with the board?
You can do that.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Markort. Next is our Director of Teaching and Learning, this is Seaver.
So in the midst of middle school renovations, we also had our materials delivered for the American Reading Company. And I just wanted to let the board know that we are, we have all of the materials. We're still unpacking as far as kind of looking at how that is going to be implemented, letting people move into it as they're comfortable. So again, as a reminder, you approved to work with the first unit, K through 8. And so all of our staff has got their materials, and then they're dipping into those lesson plans. Those lesson plans are coming out both digitally and traditionally for students, for them to have that materials, not only to have books in hand, but also to have those lesson plans where we're really addressing some of the holes that we saw in our academic achievement in the areas of phonics, vocabulary acquisition, and some of those other things that we spoke about with S R 3. So very, very excited with that. Also, really impressed with the follow-up and follow-through with our elbow-to-elbow training. So we had Gina Sanchez come from American Reading on August 31st and meet with all of our staff, first grade through eighth grade, just to make sure they understand what they were getting and what they're doing. Our next follow-up is on the 27th and 28th. She will be coming back to work with our elementary. We did move our training with our middle school just a little bit, because they're supposed to be here on the 8th. And so with everything going on, we moved to just have them, their next meeting will be on October 5th. So again, our expertise, elbow-to-elbow with our teachers, getting great feedback from our teachers, also being able to ask those questions that you don't want to ask in a full group. So I know you said this, but can you show me? So I really am impressed with not only the materials, but also the professional development, to make sure that we have staff that's comfortable doing what they want to do. And it doesn't feel like we're putting more on the plate without giving them some support on how I think that happened. Also excited because we'll have a little bit more information for parents coming out. So more of that information from the American Reading Company should be coming out in the next weeks. Three and four is where we really talk about that at-home stuff. So just again, as you're out and about in the community and you ask, I want to get this, is this the new, okay? It really is integrating to support what we're doing and filling some of those gaps that we had going on. At our next instructional committee, we'll be talking about the next steps. And that's my second topic. Instructional committee met the 15th. We handled the final draft of our library use that we've been kind of working on. None of this is new, but we wanted to have a consolidated form for communication, and that's been added to our website. So under parent forms, I'm assuming some of it will go in our Thursday folders this week, and then also being used by our elementary, middle and high school staff. But now, instead of getting three different newsletters, we're all getting the same documents. Also, if parents have concern on what can my kids read at school, they'll be able to search the word library and find what they're looking for under those parent forms. Our next meeting is August 21st. We'll be meeting at the district, we'll start with talking a little bit deeper on American Reading Company, and then hopefully looking at our scope and sequence for meetings for the rest of the year.
September 25th?
Probably, makes some sense.
Yep.
September 21st, thanks so much. Mark has agreed to be our chairperson, and Holly has agreed to be our note taker. So thanks so much.
Any questions? Hearing done, we'll move the agenda. We'll move to vouchers and receipts.
Vouchers for the month, you saw some of those notes in the packet, Millbach Construction, Somerville, and the last asbestos remover for payment. Those were three of the four that I noted. Also, there was the American Reading Company that you heard Mrs. Seaver just talked about, and things that we shared in our budget book. Two other ones that I didn't specifically note, but ones that are important. One was the Greenfield Tower from Conconnect, that was to re-engage our internet connection there. That was a payment that was sent out, but remember we received revenue from that, from insurance claim as well. And then we also had, Reister Schnell was a one more that was approved by the board last year, but then we finally got it. So that was one of the expenditures as well. A few of the receipt highlights, we got the prior year property taxes in August, the government relief funds that I noted in the budget booklet also came. And then the Aldigamee County sales tax distribution that they share with school districts in Aldigamee County was half of the revenue in six months. So that was our receipt and voucher highlights for the month.
Any questions?
I saw the more the other day, I'm like, when did we buy that? Oh, yeah, we did buy it like a year and a half ago or whatever it was.
It's been forever.
It did, remember when we signed for it, it was gonna be in the order of years to get it.
We're open to a motion to approve expenditures in the amount of $199,374.71 as per the list of September 8th. I'll make that motion. Moved by John?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mandy. Need a roll call vote?
Katie Batten?
Yes.
Mark Grossman?
Yes.
John Heidemann?
Yes.
Holly Schweitzer?
Yes.
Terry Wagner?
Yes.
Mandy Wills?
Yes.
Chris Martinson?
Yes.
For receipts, record receipts, the receipt register of September 8th, 2022, in the amount of $2,874,769.3. Anything else on financial? All right, we'll move to unfinished business. So first item will be presented by Mrs. Martin, review and potential approval of local education agent or LEA at the Individual Education Plan Team.
And again, this is just an annual update that I ask for board on potential approval each year at this time, as we establish the new staff in the district. What LEA stands for, Mr. Martinson explained, it's our local education agency representative that attends each IEP meeting and is able to be knowledgeable in the curriculum areas to provide and supervise the specially designed instruction that we're coming forward at those IEP meetings for students who are identified with disabilities. So you just have a list in there for you of the updated members for this year. And generally, the people who are the LEA reps are the building level administrators and our school psychology staff. So you're just seeing as the names change and new hires come into place, you're just seeing the updated names. So we're looking for potential approval of the names on that list to be our local education agency representatives at the IEP meetings.
What's the significance of the tiers?
It is just the tiers of financial commitment. So some of the decisions are as simple as can't assume that if they're making a decision with adaptive PE versus regular PE, or if we need to involve a season contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions or discussion? Open to a motion to approve the local LEA.
I'll second it.
Moved by Terry. Seconded by Mark. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 No, say no. Motion carries. Next, we'll turn our attention to the budget for which we just had the budget hearing. First item is a proposal to approve the 2022-23 budget for all funds in the total amount of $37,470,75. Is there a motion? So move that. Moved by Terry?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark. Discussion? Hearing done, we'll call for a roll call vote on that.
Mark Grossman?
Yes.
John Heidemann?
Yes.
Holly Schweitzer?
Yes.
Terry Wagner?
Yes.
Mandy Wills?
Yes.
Katie Batten?
Yes.
Chris Martinson?
Yes.
Motion carry. We'll move to approval of the 2022-23 Fund 10 tax levy in the amount of $7,190,90.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Mark. Seconded by Katie. Discussion? All those, actually, roll call vote.
John Heidemann?
Yes.
Holly Schweitzer?
Yes.
Terry Wagner?
Yes.
Mandy Wills?
Yes.
Katie Batten?
Yes.
Mark Grossman?
Yes.
Chris Martinson?
Yes.
Next, we will consider the proposal for 2022-23 Fund 38 tax levy in the amount of $1,023,000.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Mandy. I'll second. Seconded by John. Roll call vote.
Holly Schweitzer?
Yes.
Terry Wagner?
Yes.
Mandy Wills?
Yes.
Katie Batten?
Yes.
Mark Grossman?
Yes.
John Heidemann?
Yes.
Chris Martinson?
Yes.
And lastly, concerning the budget, is a proposal to approve the 2022-23 Fund 80 levy in the amount of $125,000.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Mark?
I'll second.
Seconded by Holly. Roll call vote, please.
Terry Wagner?
Yes.
Mandy Wills?
Yes.
Katie Batten?
Yes.
Mark Grossman?
Yes.
John Heidemann?
Yes.
Holly Schweitzer?
Yes.
Chris Martinson?
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll, we'll move to the discussion of proposed resolutions by our district to the WASB convention. And we'll take these whatever time. The first one is a proposed resolution for a parental bill of rights in K-12 education. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? I'll make that motion. Moved by John? Seconded by Holly. Discussion?
What's in the bill?
I have a copy of it here.
Why it wasn't in our packet? I mean, I, I've come here tonight, I don't know what's in the bill, I didn't have a chance to review it, yet you're asking me now, just hold on.
Well, we're voting on it because the deadline is the 15th of September.
But that doesn't mean I shouldn't have it before I vote on it, Chris.
It's, it's a good point, it's readily available, the bill number was listed there. But I'll, I'll claim the, the error if it is one of not including it. I do have it right here with me, if anybody would like a copy.
I did, I did review it, and I did some investigating onto it, what it, what it really means to our staff, our, and our administrators. And I also found some information on. And I also found some information on WASB's website regards to that, and I'll get to that in a second here. The biggest concern that I have about this, first of all, is that the majority of what's listed in the bill already exists within our policy within the school district. And I'm not aware of any incidents within our school district of those things not, not taking place. So I don't see, I don't see a reason for this because of that. But the other thing that concerns me the most is that there's three things in this bill that will now make our staff members, our building administrators, our directors, and our district administrator susceptible to lawsuits. And so basically, what it means is that now anybody who's interacting or teaching or has anything to do with our children's education is, could be a target. And I can't imagine anybody wanting to go to work every day with the understanding that if they make a mistake, that they could end up being sued because of, because of, because of this bill. So, in my information that I got through the WASB, I found some information from the SAA, and if you're not familiar with that, is that's the School Administrators Alliance. And what that is, is that's an alliance of committees that's made up of building administrators, business managers, district administrators, administrators of special services, and school personnel administrators. And they had so much concern about items that are in this bill that they actually went and they hired a law firm, Boardman and Clark, to go ahead and review this, this bill, and then take a look at all the dangers that would exist for anybody involved in education. And I've got it here. I'm not going to read it, but I'll distribute it if you want to take a look at it. And it's, quite frankly, it's, it's something that will drive the biggest problem we have right now in education, and that's people leaving education. And if they, if this thing would ever see the light of day, I think you would see a greater movement out of, out of, out of teaching. And, and I think, first of all, you're going to see a lot of administrators go into the public sector because they're going to, they're going to have targets on their back based upon what I read, not only from Boardman and Clark, but what I read in some other areas. And, and if you don't think that finding teachers is a problem, then you haven't been reading the news as of late. Now, Chris, I know you're a big proponent of the voucher program, right?
Yes.
So we had a school, we had a school in our, in our community here have to shut down this year because they couldn't find enough teachers. And because of that, at that school, and I'm familiar with it because it's MPP and I'm on the finance committee, we had 15 students that had vouchers. Seven of them are going to take transportation to go to a parochial school in Greenville. But eight of them, or it's the other way around, are coming back into the, into the public school system. So, being a proponent of this kind of goes against what you're in favor of because that's, that's going to get hurt the most because the parochial schools, they're, they're, they're at the bottom of the run when it comes to what they can pay staff. And that's why we got, I mean, literally, got nobody to apply. And so we didn't have any choice. We had to close the school. And so those, those people that were looking to benefit from the voucher program, they saw that evaporate. And, and this is just going to, this will just make that be a bigger and, and, and bigger problem. And so I, I'm, I don't know what you're looking for out of this.
Well, it's not what I'm looking for.
Well, you proposed it. You proposed it, so what are you looking for out of this? What, what?
It is a bill that did pass both houses of legislatures. It did not get signed.
Right. It got passed on a, on a, on a Republican Democrat vote. I mean, it was 100% Republican in favor and 100% Democrat against it. So it wasn't even something that I think got a lot of, got a lot of attention for, for people to look at. It was, it was a political.
There are a number of states that have passed very similar, and it's being done very well in those states. Florida is, is one that has a parent's bill that's very similar to this. I think probably our legislators got the idea from Florida. It's something that came to light during COVID. A lot of parents felt that they were shut out of the process. I think here, not so much, but you know, there are a lot of school districts that did, I think.
I'm concerned about here, all right? Because that's what we're here for, is here. Our district and our staff and our, our students. And I'm not seeing any evidence of this being an issue here. So why would we want to then propose something like this for the rest of the state?
If it's not an issue here, what do we have to compare from the, what?
I don't see, I mean, I don't see.
I threw it out there because I think it would be very popular in our district, and I think it's something that would empower parents to feel like they're.
I think if anybody voted and voted in favor of this, you'd have to look at that camera out there and say to our staff, you're evidently not busy enough because we're now going to give you some more responsibilities here.
Well, what are those responsibilities, Mark?
Well, this is not a complete document.
I mean, you, you make a lot of statements, but you quickly move past them without any documentation, without anything other than throwing out slanderous claims and then moving on to the next.
I have the documentation here, it's not slanderous claims.
Well, you're good at that.
No.
And it's fine to disagree on things.
But I'm giving my reason why I think it's, I think it's not healthy for our district. It's not healthy, it's not a healthy message to send to our staff. We want to keep them here. We have a great staff. I think we have a great administrative team. I want to keep them here. I don't want to send something out with our name stamped on it that doesn't reflect the work that they're doing right now because some other state has, has passed this. Or there might be some problems elsewhere in our state, but that's not our business, John. Our business is to keep, keep this organization together and keep it moving, moving forward.
And your, and your opinion would be, or your, your, your point would be, parents should just shut them all, sit down, stay in their lane and not ask questions.
That's conjecture, yeah.
I honestly don't feel super comfortable voting on it only because I don't know how our administrators feel, and I don't know how our staff feels. And I'd be interested, could this be part of our staff survey coming up?
Well, I'm, I'm in agreeance with you on that, Katie.
Well, I just mean, like, I would like to know how they feel. Like, is there something missing that you see in our policy right now? Because like you said, it's not an issue. Is there anything that you feel that's missing?
Well, under state law, most of these rights are already guaranteed. If you look at Wisconsin statutes, these rights are largely, 80% are guaranteed. The two that concern me out of this is, one that I think is cumbersome because you were in the strategic planning meeting, Chris was in it, I was in it, when Ted Nitski out of CISA 6 was talking about how to engage students in a more powerful learning process. And one of those was to survey them or poll them.
Those two, yes?
Students. So would you like to learn this lesson with video? Would you like to read a book to learn the lesson? Do you like an open discussion? There were half dozen varieties that were out there. The whole point of that was to enhance our learning opportunity for our students by letting them be part of the decision process. In this, one of the rights of parents would be to be notified of any poll or survey being done in the school. So before a teacher could do that, they have to notify the community, their student, their student population, parents. I'm going to send a poll to my dear kids about how they might like to learn this lesson. Now, I find that pretty cumbersome and awkward. Now, there are no exceptions to this. It just says polls and surveys. The other that concerns me is, there's one in here that, one of the rights that they're talking about is the right for parents to be notified of any creation of updates in security or surveillance. Now, part of those updates is to keep our children safe. And generally, we try to keep those measures out of the public for that purpose. It's not anything sinister. If you're trying to secure a facility, you don't go out and publicize your safety measures so everybody knows what you're doing. I don't think that's appropriate in a bill of rights. They have, they have us to elect, they have administrators to talk to. I don't think that belongs in here. The other is the right to timely inform of any acts of violence or crimes occurred on grounds in the child's school. I think that takes us down a path that's very, very cautious because we cannot really identify crimes or spread a word into a community about a potential crime without that person being charged. We certainly can't put any names out there relative to any minors. We had an occurrence here last year, and it was the same kind of thing. But why didn't we hear about this? A lot of it is because there's a lot of legality about what we can say and what we can't say. And I think putting this in there puts the situation in the administrative team. It says, well, you've got to tell us everything that happened, or we're not going to be happy because this is our right. I don't have a problem with having parents' rights, and I don't think that's what Mark was saying, John. I don't think that's what any of us are saying. We've all had children go through the system. Some still have. If you look at state statutes, 80% of these rights are defined already. Why do we have to add these other three additional ones? I don't see the merit in that myself. And I would agree, why aren't we asking the people that have to live with this as well? Because there will be additional things that have to be done. So that's my thoughts.
Any further comments?
I have a comment overall on these resolutions. I understand that the deadline for submission is Thursday. You've been a part of this process for years. You know that when these resolution deadlines are. They've been September 15th for years.
Well, I just learned about it this year as an approach, but.
But you've been a part of it to know where to look to see when, when the deadlines are coming up. To, to put, to put these three things, which are very controversial items, not only in a, on a, on a nationwide basis, but locally and statewide, to put these things in front of us on Friday afternoon before the meeting tonight and ask us to approve, to have these things submitted, to me goes against everything that people talk about being transparent. Because nobody, nobody has had a chance to see these resolutions until, I think it was 11:54 when I got the email with them. So the, the, the public hasn't had a chance to see it. I haven't had a chance to go out to the public and say, these are some things that were being asked to approve, to submit in the, under the name of the School District of New London to the WASB that it may or may not be approved by them to put it on, on the docket for the, for the convention in January. And I think we owe it to our constituents, we owe it to our staff and our administrators to have some time to give us to, to talk to them about it, like Katie had mentioned, to get some input back from our constituents. And, and whether we make, we make the list this year or next year, I don't think it's going to matter much. This isn't something that's going to go away tomorrow. And so in the name of transparency, I'm, I'm going to, if I can, make a motion that we table this at least another two weeks, if not a month, until we have a chance to get these, to get this information out in front of the public and get, and get some feedback on it.
May I respond to that? Wait, I have a motion to table. Go ahead, go ahead. Motion to table, we need to either get a second or then we move on. Either way, is there?
I'll second.
Is there a second about tabling?
I'll second.
Terry seconded. Now we're discussing whether to table it or not, if your comment fits into that. If we, then go ahead. Actually, it does, yeah. I think it's very hypocritical to say that because you made, you made proposals in the back in, in the past. We never got those proposals weeks or month in advance, never. We got them in the packet the same way this came.
You'd like to give me some examples of them, John, because I've just drawn a blank on what you're talking about.
You did the same thing in the past.
You're going to have to give me some examples, John, I've drawn a blank on what you're talking about.
The proposals that we sent through the WASB in the past years, it's always been done this way, only you don't, you don't like these proposals. It has nothing to do with the timeframe, you're just, you're just using that as a.
You're going to have to give me an example, John, for this argument to be legitimate.
We're going to have to move on.
Yeah, folks, it's, you know, we, it, it, it doesn't really, everybody had this, everybody had the same opportunity to submit ideas, and anybody could have submitted proposals now or, or before, and, you know.
Can I comment on the tabling of it?
Yes.
I'm kind of thinking back to local. And I think when I used to stand at that podium for a year in public comment, making the point of, let's focus on what's best for New London and not necessarily what's happening in Chicago or New York. And I brought all that local data because all my kids attend or did attend here. I feel like, can we have an opportunity in the effort of keeping things local? I don't even know if a month is going to be enough because I really truly want to know what our staff thinks about a lot of these topics, and I truly want to know what our parents think. And that is how I got elected, I think, is because I wanted to speak on behalf of who I was representing, and I don't feel like I have enough information. But that doesn't mean down the road it would not be the case. But I stood up there for a whole year and talked the second Monday of the month on making local decisions, and I truly value what our staff and parents want. I mean, my kids love their teachers. It was, I'm going to a funeral next week for my fourth grade teacher's, like, very close family friend. And I think Molly was so passionate about her teachers. And I just think, we don't have a school if we don't have them. And I'd like to learn more on their perspective than just making my own decision right now, especially the administrators. And maybe it's a public hearing, maybe we have a parent hearing, maybe we have an admin on all three topics. I mean, I'm definitely in favor of not tying the lunches thing. I think that's preemptive. I don't think we're forced to make a decision that maybe manual went a little ahead. I'm not saying never, I'd like more time.
Yeah, we stick on this one and we'll talk about the other. Any other comments on whether to table it or not? If not, we'll vote on.
My, 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 my motion was to table all. Table all.
Well, the one that's.
So you can go ahead and have conversation about the other two. And, and.
The thing is, you can only deal with a motion on the table, which is about this one, and you can move to table that. You, you can't move to table one, a motion that isn't on the floor yet. So we have to deal with that.
All right.
Just another way to deal with that, we'll tell you what.
Go through the same thing, yeah.
Good, Holly has something.
Scott, did you have a chance to look at that AB 963?
You know, many of the talking points that came up tonight are, are relevant. You know, the processes, the protocols to reestablish expectations, whether it be through handbook development or our local policy. Again, if that were to come to fruition, all school boards in the state of Wisconsin, you know, I think that's how this avenue is moving forward. They would all have to be in compliance with the parameters which were known as.
Majority.
Or, they were the majority, maybe some are already, right? But that, that would definitely take a lot of work and action of the board to ensure that we are ready for that. That's not a switch you would flip overnight, you know, within that process.
So, we're ready, we're going to vote on the motion, Mark's motion to table this resolution. And we can.
I request a voice vote.
Roll call.
Roll call, yeah.
Mandy Wills?
I vote for tabling it.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know if that's yes or no.
That's a yes.
Katie Batten?
Yes.
Mark Grossman?
Yes.
John Heidemann? John Heideman.
No.
Chris Martinson.
No.
Terry Wagner.
Yes.
Holly Schweitzer. No. No, okay.
The motion to table passes, so this resolution is tabled. We'll move on to the second resolution, which you have in front of you. Is there? This would be, Mark, if you wanted to combine and table the remaining two, since we don't have a motion on the floor, it would be in order, or else we'll take motions one at a time.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we table the remaining two resolutions for discussion at a later date, kind of along with what Katie was saying. Do you want a specific timeline in there?
You can make the motion however you want.
At a later date.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded to take the remaining two resolutions and table them to a future date. Discussion of the motion to table.
Do we have a questionnaire developed for the October staff survey yet, and is this something we could insert on, like, what this means from their perspective?
The survey is created as shared the last time that we talked about that.
Is there, I guess, is there any room yet? Is it too late?
And I guess the idea and intent, if there are three questions, parent's choice, USDA funding stipulations, or the firearms and training and that type of thing. Theoretically, yes, they probably could be brought into it somehow in that conversation.
I would not recommend that.
I wouldn't either.
We're already pretty lengthy, I'm just thinking of the length of the survey. The longer it is, the less people take it, run it through. I think the survey we're talking about has enough content that we'll want to get. If we would choose to table this, we would have time to assemble the survey and ask these three areas to say what questions we want to ask of them, and submit a separate survey to them for response would be my recommendation, Katie.
If you remember some of the discussion on that potential survey process of a singleton or one or two question, do you support parent choice? You know, something simple as that, do you support, I don't have the name of the next one.
I believe, though, without having some reference to what you're supporting.
Right, exactly. So you don't know what they're... A person would not know what they're... So the intent to improve state statute saves to support funding of K-12 education, to increase school safety, and the parameters that are part of our resolution tonight, understanding what those parameters are, do you support that or not? Or the one that is also on the table with the funding of USDA funds to support current path that we know, or the reduction, understanding that, do you support that? Those are things that could be read through it, here's the question, here's the homework to read to know what it is, what's your opinion on it? And if the board values, I guess, looking for that from our staff, again, that's just one lane of our school community, you know, but that would definitely be a lane.
Well, can I amend Mark's motion to keep them separated?
I believe with a motion to table like this, we'd have to turn that motion down and then go back to...
Start over.
Go back to the original idea of taking them, that would turn us back to taking them one at a time. So we're ready, are we ready to vote?
So if we vote no on combining, we start over.
Start over. We start over just with these two. We've already tabled the first resolution, okay? So are we ready to vote? Okay. We want a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mark Rosman.
Yes.
John Heideman.
No.
Holly Schweitzer.
No.
Terry Wagner.
Yes.
Mandy Wills.
No.
Katie Batten.
No.
Chris Martinson.
No.
So now we're back at taking one at a time, and the typical way we do that is get a motion on the floor for the one resolution, which is proposed resolution, proposed USDA from tying subsidized schools lunches to executive orders for transgender protocols. We're open to a motion to adopt that.
How much that motion?
Moved by Katie.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mandy. The floor is open to discuss this.
I think there needs to be some clarity to what the actual USDA response to this is. There's a lot of misinformation out there right now about this. So if you go to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, who funds and directs the USDA, on May twenty-second, they were basically charged with reviewing their policies relative to a Supreme Court decision of Bostock versus Clayton. Bostock was a transgender student who had been denied rights to use the bathroom of their identity. That court, case went up to Supreme Court, the Supreme Court found in favor of Bostock. And in that decision determined that you couldn't discuss bathrooms without sex being an issue. And so by using the guidelines of Title IX of the Education Amendment of nineteen seventy-two, and then Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, and the Food and Nutrition Act of two thousand eight, which basically said every child should be offered the opportunity to have a nutritious meal, as well as for us as a state, it would be under our statute one eighteen point one-three, which is a non-discrimination statute. Those three federal laws, they're not mandates, those are laws. They were now to be interpreted under the guidance of Bostock versus Clayton. And so what the USDA has said, and this is from, this is from a Politico article that ran June twenty-second. And while some of you may not like the source, the source is really irrelevant, the content is what counts here. This was USDA's response to a Senate committee meeting on this, what would USDA do because senators were considering stopping the funding for USDA based on this ruling. So USDA's guidance, this is what they said to the senators. USDA's guidance, however, is only aimed at programs that receive federal nutrition money, not other aspects of school policy that may affect LGBTQ students. A USDA official emphasized that the administration wouldn't pull funding from a school lunch program just because the state had restrictive laws around sports or bathroom access for transgender children, nor because a school lacks an LGBTQ policy. Rather, individuals could only file complaints if they've been discriminated against by the specific school lunch program based on gender identity. For example, if they were denied food because they were transgender. So we have nothing to risk in this unless we decide as a school district that our food service will not serve one of our students because of some transgender issue, any issue that would be discriminatory, race, ethnicity, religion, any of those violations, USDA would then consider not funding that program. So to say that this is the big club is not correct. It is a statement that, if we do not violate someone's rights by using discrimination as to any number of characteristics, they don't have an issue with us. They will continue to fund our program. So I'm a little concerned, why are we going against this at this point? And I really dislike this idea of these mandates. These are laws. These laws have been on the books for decades. They haven't changed. And many, many, many of our students have benefited from these laws. There was no Title IX when I went to high school. We didn't have girls' sports. They played GAA, which was basically equivalent of intermarials. We've had Civil Rights Acts. This seems to me we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist unless we are willing to discriminate against a child and not give them a meal.
I don't think that's what we're working on. I think we're...
But that's what is being said here. Don't misinterpret what this is, that's my problem. Everybody's saying if you don't do this, USDA is going to shut down your food. If you put anything in about a transgender policy, that's not what USDA has said. USDA has said unless you actually violate the rights of a student, we don't have an issue with you.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
So I'm gonna go back to, I just want to go back to what I was talking about, the local part, like, I'm back to, let's let us decide, but not tie it to kids getting lunch. Like, we're back to, what's best for our district, what do our parents want? And I don't want anyone to not get lunch, and all of a sudden, everyone's prices are triple. I think we're proposing, we're not saying nobody gets lunch, we're saying, why does what we do in our district what's best for what our families want?
What gives us the right to discriminate against a transgender child? Because, let me finish, please. Let me finish, because if you discriminate, look at our policy on discrimination, look at our policy on harassment, four eleven and four eleven point one, we're citing out a particular group of people, of children, who we decide if we write a policy that deals with them specifically, which would be discriminatory according to the laws, we should not be punished.
We're just saying we don't want to tie it to the lunch.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
What are we doing?
I'm getting, I'm getting...
I do.
Give me the definition of unpopular social engineering plan. You wrote this, correct, or did you have somebody else write this for you?
No, I wrote it.
What is it?
It's just what it says.
No, what is it?
He doesn't have to answer your demands, Mark.
Yeah, he does, I want to know what the details are of this. I want to know, I want, I do. I want to know. Ignore him. Go ahead, please answer my question.
Popular social engineering demand would be to allow a bio male to play in the girls' team, that's one example.
Well, but you said funding...
Which is unfair, I think.
Unpopular social engineering plan. So social engineering. I mean, I did some research on it, and I'm not following where that ties in. I mean, here's my take on this, is that this is something that speaks of discrimination. And just as, and Terry's information that he shared is the first time I've heard this, all right? So it's nothing that two of us have talked about. But if indeed that is indeed the case, the only way that we would lose funding is if we refused to serve somebody because of their, you know, of their sexual orientation, their race, their color, what have you, I don't see the benefit in this as long as we don't do that. What this is saying is, is that we still, we struggle with the whole transgender idea. I mean, that's what we're saying to the world, and I don't see...
We're not even saying that. All we're saying is, don't tie this to the food program. Don't tie the, and this is the policy perspective that...
Let me ask you this question, then, Chris.
In July issue, and the July issue tells us that the USDA has made this proclamation as of May fifth, and that school districts must comply. However, fortunately, the next month, August, if you look at it, they said the USDA was premature because they were using the Biden executive order on transgenderism, and that executive order, while it was made, there's a process before it goes into effect. And there's first the comment period, and the comment period was still there, and it actually is there till today. Today was the last day of it. So they're saying in this later one, districts that thought they were going to get their food money cut off because of this, they're not going to get it cut off this fall, but they could, you know, subsequently if that order goes down. So that's the way. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not going to, you know, argue with anybody as to what really those executive orders say or those court cases. I'm just saying, if they say we must put these protocols in place in order to get food, that's wrong. That's wrong, you know? And all we're saying is, and maybe they are, maybe you're right.
Chris, that's what the USDA has said. Pretty clearly that this is not predicated on driving policies. It is predicated specifically on if we are willing, or our lunch program chooses to discriminate against a child for any reason covered under Title IX, Civil Rights Act, Food Nutrition Act, then you can potentially lose your USDA funding because it's, and that would have to be filed by the individual who had been discriminated against.
Then I call a question?
Yeah, you can call a question.
No, because I still have, I still have one more.
We keep calling the question, we get to vote, we have to vote on that.
So, no, no, just a minute. We've talked, we had two candidates on this board, run on transparency. If we can't have a discussion, you know, thorough discussion on something, I think we lack a lot of transparency.
There's discussion and then there's attacking.
Calling the question means that we get to vote on whether to vote. Okay, and it takes two-thirds, so in that case, you can only have, you know, you have to get five yes votes to call the question. So we're gonna call the question right now. All in favor of calling the question, raise your hand. That means we're gonna vote on it after this. Okay, we're gonna call the question, sorry. So we're up against getting through this in a timely manner. So we'll have a roll call vote on the motion to adopt the proposed resolution.
Katie Batten.
Yes.
Mark Rosman.
No.
John Heideman.
Yes.
Holly Schweitzer.
Yes.
Terry Wagner.
I vote no for discrimination.
Mandy Wills.
Yes.
Chris Martinson.
Yes. So this resolution will go forward to the WASB. I am requesting that as a footnote on this resolution, there is a notice, this was not unanimous, and the vote by name is listed.
We'll put the vote numbers...
Why not names?
The names will be in the minutes.
You can put my name on it.
Put them on the resolution.
What's your pleasure, board members?
Put it on the resolution.
Put them on the resolution.
That's fine.
We'll do that. And then we will move then to the last resolution submitted by John. John, would you like to say a few words about it to introduce it before we...
It speaks for itself if you read it. Well, it does. I mean, obviously, read it. Everybody here read it. I don't need to get into another fifteen, twenty-minute argument. We know who's going to be in favor, we know who's not. If you want to make, if you want to make your motion to table it, go ahead. I'm fine with that, too.
I make a motion that we table the John's resolution for further investigation for six months.
Motion to table John's resolution for six months, is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Terry. We can have a brief discussion on whether to table it, and we can talk some more.
How'd you pick six months?
Because I think that there's a lot to be unpacked in this, an awful lot. I think it's a highly controversial subject, and I think that we need the time to get input from everybody in our community, employees and people within the district. And it's not something that...
And it's not something that, that we should take lightly. But again, I'm going to, I'm going to fall back to my old basis for tabling all of these was this lack of transparency because of this, this deadline that, that we're, we're up against tonight. And I, I don't think that, that, that should have any bearing in our decision.
Well, I'm not opposed to getting more opinions, I just don't want to table it and not act on it. Like I really want to know, like I want to have steps in place to.
Well, but that's why, that's why I put a date on there. So that we have a deadline as to when we're going to come back to this and that, and I offered a date.
So what's going to happen between now and six months from now?
I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Are we going to meet in six months and then table it again for another six months?
So is that WASB, is that, that we're going to decide in six months whether this is a WASB recommendation?
For next year to be submitted. Or if you want to go, you're the delegate this year, so if you want to, if you want to go to the convention and, and, and bring it up, at the convention you have the ability to do that.
Actually, you don't. It has to be something that was passed at a board level first in order to be brought up on the floor.
Well, yeah, but I mean, but so, so the convention is the middle of January, all right? So this is September, so I'll change that to, I'll change that to three months. It, it compresses it, but then that way we would have a board decision before John goes to the, John goes to the convention.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't work that way. The resolution in order to be considered has to be sent in by the 15th of September. And then it goes to a committee.
Right.
It, it goes to a committee called the Resolutions Committee, which has been selected.
You can't just bring a resolution to the convention, it has to, it has to go to the committee.
It has to go.
All right, so then we don't have to worry about the convention for this year.
The committee can reject them, but if they reject them, the sponsor of it can bring it up on the floor.
Okay, all right, so then we can go back to the original timeline that I.
Do you feel like six months, like I would like to hear from, how does Mr. Terry feel about the topic, how does our sheriff feel about the topic?
Right.
Like how does our local police department, how does you feel?
Right.
And I mean, I have, half my kids go every day to school. I don't know that a sticker that says no gun zone is preventing anything, but I'd love to know, like, before I make a decision, like how do they feel about it?
How comfortable would everybody else be?
How do they, like, what does our local police department, do they anything I haven't covered? Because, because can we invite them?
Yep.
And like, tell us what you think.
Absolutely. And then, and, and even go so far as to look at any other districts around the state, country that have done something like this? What, what statistics are out there that say this is something that's effective? There's some things in there that I like. I'd love to have the, the metal detectors.
Yeah, right.
The kids go through at school.
Yeah.
But there's, there's a lot of answers that, a lot of questions that we'd have to answer about doing that, that go, go along with that. And so that's why I'm saying there's a lot in that that, that has to be unpacked.
Yes, yes. So one suggestion would be for to consider, and I think this is ultimately part of our facilities and our facilities make up in what we do, that our facilities committee takes this up for discussion and prioritize, or what are those items that we want to focus on, to share with, and then go out and find that information. And then something on this topic, I think there's value added of the whole board hearing it collaboratively together. So if we have, you know, the outcomes of that committee, they're being presented to full board for knowledge and the community as well.
It goes beyond that, though. If you bring in metal detectors, there is no place in the world I know with metal detectors that there's not a security person standing next to that detector. So now you're getting into adding personnel. Right. But those are the things that maybe we should be discussing with the facilities. That's just not a facility issue, that's a personnel issue. Well, I get, I get that, and then it would go to personnel. Right, so there's a lot of places this touches.
I would rather have that than.
And I would also suggest that while there certainly can be a relationship between mental health and school violence, they aren't necessarily one of the same. I, I can support the mental health resolution here. I think, I've written to our legislators, both at the Assembly and the state level, saying when they had $80 billion they were given, instead of giving it back as a tax break to taxpayers, why aren't you funding mental health in schools? I got crickets, which is usual. But they didn't, they didn't look at that. They, they took that $80 billion and gave it because they had to spend it in something related to education, they gave it back as a tax break on school taxes.
I have a question.
So why don't we separate these? Because I have a lot of concerns, gun violence often isn't an elaborately planned act, sometimes it's quite spontaneous. So I have somebody I'm allowing into my building with a gun, we have no idea what their mental health is that day they walk in that building, none whatsoever.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
Suddenly, they're, they're in the middle of a very ugly family issue, and they decide the best way to solve this is to end it off. Not a good idea.
I have a question. You both stated things that you were in support of that are good ideas. Where's your proposal?
John, I didn't submit a proposal. That's why I'm, that's why I'm moving to have it tabled, so we can go through, we can, we can, we can unpack it, and then we can look at. Because I didn't submit one, John, I'm not allowed to comment on yours.
No, but you could have submitted proposals.
No, I'm not going to.
We can do better.
We got this, we got this.
All right, guys, let's not, let's not, thanks, Mandy, for pointing that out. We got to keep it to the discussion of the resolution and whether to table it. I can give, I did a little research into where this came from, because John, it came from Germantown, Jerkton, Germantown School District passed it, but they did not pass it as a WASB proposed resolution, they passed it as a Germantown School Board Resolution, and they sent it to every senator and every representative, and to the governor, and to the EBI. And it got a lot of press play and was picked up in publications around the state. And consequently, and a mutual friend that, that Mark and I have, Stan Kleszewski, has a friend that I've come to know who's on the school board down in Germantown. So I called him, and he, he kind of gave me a little bit of their, their history, and he, he said that most of the districts around them had requested it and were looking, you know, had board members that were trying to pass it, I never did check back whether any of them did. But they, they were just going the route of directly trying to influence the legislature. They didn't, they didn't take the route of trying to go through WASB. So it's something that, you know, two months or four months or six months probably isn't going to have a big impact because the legislature isn't going to start up again until January. So it, it's something that if we could, if we could, you know, pick up the parts of this, we might consider.
I think as long as we have a timeline to act on.
Yeah.
Yeah, like steps on doing our homework and hearing from the parties that are the experts.
Not just the experts, people have to live in that environment, should have.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like the experts at school, the police department, the sheriff's department, like how other places are seeing success.
Yeah, and I have had discussions with our sheriff about this type of proposal. He would be very glad to work with us on a program and as long as, as the people that were picked were, were well certified to do it, and as long as he was convinced of that. But he said current law doesn't, his, the county's attorney has advised him that there's not a current mechanism in law to do this. I know Ross has been here and explained that there is, and there's some debate in the legal community about that, I don't know who's right or wrong.
I think based on John's proposal, there isn't, because you look at his whereas, he talks about the failure to put concealed weapons in or carrying into school grounds. I believe it says one, two, three, or item down.
I think that came from Germantown, their, their attorney believes that it's illegal to do it now without student state laws.
I think, well, I think we can all agree, safety is not most concerned, and especially when half my house is leaving to go to school every morning, I think we're all in agreement there.
I guess, I guess on this one, I don't see a problem in tabling it, because I think the chances of WASB taking it up are above a snowball's chance in Calvary now. But.
I agree with that. I think our facilities should look at metal detectors, though, and if that means extra staff, then that means extra staff. I'm not all about having more guns in school.
We have to fund it, so you have to figure out.
I'll take it out of us or funds.
When will you get it?
Danielle?
Don't use, don't use.
Spawning some money.
Don't use us or funds for, for things that are reoccurring.
We'll figure it out.
It gets districts in a lot of financial trouble.
We're ready to vote on Mark's motion to table it, or is it up to six months, or hard and fast six months?
I would say.
I didn't get the wording on that.
I said six months, I said six months, because it's going to take us six months to, to, to go through a lot of the stuff that we've talked about.
Should we have a?
We're voting on tabling, correct?
Voting on tabling John's resolution.
John Heideman.
No.
Holly Schweitzer. Yes. Terry Wagner.
Yes.
Mandy Wills.
Yes.
Katie Batten.
Yes.
Mark Grossman.
Yes.
Chris Martinson.
I'll vote yes. Okay. That brings us back to intermediate school project update.
So board members, this is just informational, and I started out our meeting with information in our district administrator report, just to give the overview that the middle school is up and operational within the spaces, if you were there as apparently early and had the opportunity to see the spaces and comments appreciated on the, on the workmanship and what's been done thus far as we move forward, noting that the construction will continue on primarily in that fifth and sixth grade hallway, they look to complete the restrooms, and then when completed, we'll move on to the main corridor restroom for the boys and girls, and we'll be able to accommodate student traffic flow within, for various events within the framework of the building. Mild on construction and select H patch individuals will be in the building ongoing as further reforms come in to refine. You may have heard it was a little warm last week in the building as they're fine tuning the, the AC, and hopefully Mother Nature helps us out here as we get down and we can work on adjusting the heat, which will be a little more temperamental in the process as we move forward. But again, potential work as it continues on, not to obstruct learning, and weekends, nights, as soon as appropriate, in various areas, areas, spaces of the building. Any questions of intermediate middle school at the current time? Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to move into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851(c) of Wisconsin statute, this is a board vacation, we can be in closed session to discuss the employment and compensation certified and support staff members over which the board has jurisdiction and exercising its responsibility. Is there a motion to go in closed session?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Holly, moved by Mark. All in favor, do we need a roll call vote?
Holly Schweitzer, yes. Terry Wagner.
Yes.
Mandy Wills, yes. Katie Batten, yes. Mark Grossman.
Yes.
John Heideman.
Yes.
Chris Martinson.
Yes. We are now in closed session.
What would happen if we didn't get a motion to go in the closed session?
Do we want to go?
Because we don't go.
Just seven.
And there's six here.
There's actually no requirement that you deal with anything in closed session.
Sure. Just, we go on, we can like the next.
At least you know what's.
I just said it, I'm not.
Yes, okay, perfect, he's all.
Well, they can get, they can hire, they're, they're essentially hired a lot of time when we get out.
No, no, I mean, we're just.